Good morning, this is Chair Sharon Bronson, Pima County Board of Supervisors. As I'm looking at participants, I see we have a call for the supervisors. Supervisor Gralva has joined us and Supervisor Christie. I am not seeing Supervisor Heinz or Supervisor Scott. Could our clerk, Ms. Cauteranata, confirm?
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Oh, I see you now, okay.
I was sending you to Supervisor Heinz.
Okay. And... We're still... Mayor Romero hasn't joined us yet. I see Councilmember Nikki Lee has joined us, Councilmember Paul Cunningham, Councilmember Paul Durham, Councilmember Steve Kazachik, and Councilmember Richard Fimbras.
I don't see how to mute myself.
Down on the bottom toolbar.
It should be, yeah, it should be on the bottom toolbar. And I see that Supervisor Heinz has joined us. So we are waiting at this point, I think, for Councilmember Lane Santa Cruz and Mayor Romero. I'm not seeing them. Okay, okay, yep, just saw it.
Good evening, Chair, how are you?
I'm fine, you're looking good. Got some bright stuff in behind you.
Yes, we have really nice windows and they're open, so should I close them up?
No, you're fine. I was actually referring to your painting.
Oh, yeah, no, I have a painting in my little Francisco, little furniture, yeah.
How's it going? I think we still... I am not seeing Councilmember Santa Cruz. Is she on?
I don't see her, but I do see Nikki.
Everybody else is there.
Okay, I see Councilmember Rafimbras.
Yeah, I think you want to get going or you want to wait to see if she joins us?
Well, let's see if we can contact her and see if she can join us. We'll have someone call her.
Which option do we use on the bar?
All righty, and Mr. Clerk, are you with us?
I am, your honor. We're reaching that toward one.
Okay, thank you.
Which option do we use on the menu?
Councilmember Durham, you are... You do have video and you are... And we can hear you, you are unmuted, so...
No, I'm wondering which option do we use on the bottom menu to mute myself?
Below the screen, you should have... You should be seeing all of us, you should be seeing pictures of all of us. And then underneath the pictures of us is a mute and the stop video button.
And with the pictures of all of us, depending on how you would have your screen arranged, you can just click on the button, the symbol that will move you forward so you can see all of us who are joined by video.
I don't see the mute button.
It's a little microphone that you can tap on to put you on mute if you'd like.
It might be your layout, Paul, on the right... Oh, you found it, oh, good.
Councilmember Santa Cruz has joined, Your Honor.
Excellent, perfect. So we have all... Everybody's here, so I think the mayor and I are now going to call the meeting to order. A special meeting of February 19th, 2021 of the Board of Supervisors and the City Council. We'll start with roll call for the Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Christie?
Here.
Supervisor Gralva?
Here.
Supervisor Heinz?
Present.
Supervisor Scott?
Good morning, I'm here.
Chair Bronson?
Here.
All members of the Board of Supervisors are present.
And good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for being here in this historic meeting. We will now start the roll call for mayor and council. Mr. Clerk?
Nick Santa Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Durham?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Sit here.
Mr. Fimbras?
Hello, could you hear me? Here.
Yes, Councilmember Fimbras.
Mr. Kazachik?
Here.
Mayor Romero?
Here.
Do you have a call, Your Honor?
Thank you. Now we move on to invocation, and the invocation will be given to Faiana Maruful, staff member at the City Clerk's office.
Thank you, Mayor Romero, and good morning to everyone. Let us pray. Lord, thank you on behalf of all who are in attendance at this virtual meeting here today. I pray for the government officials at this joint meeting that they may represent the needs of the people of Pima County and the city of Tucson. Grant them wisdom and counsel that they may conduct the affairs with your will and govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time, as well as the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Amen.
Amen. Chair Bronson? Well, why don't we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Supervisor Gralva, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure, happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yo le doy mi aldar a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América, a la república que representa una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos.
Thank you. Thank you. And we have a number of public comments. They will be available on our website. We have just two hours for this meeting and we have much to discuss, so I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Romero if she wishes, I know, to make a few comments. And then we'll hear from our staff on the COVID-19 pandemic response issues that we've noticed.
Thank you, Chair Bronson. I am... It's a great pleasure to convene this joint meeting of the mayor and council and the Pima County Board of Supervisors. It's been quite some time since the Pima County Board of Supervisors and the Tucson Mayor and Council joined in a collaborative meeting. I believe it's been a couple of decades. I thank Chair Bronson and Supervisor Gralva for working with me to make this joint meeting a possibility. The city is committed to continuing our... And strengthen our partnership and the relationship between the city of Tucson and Pima County for the benefit of our mutual residents. Our region is stronger when local governments work together. And I thank all of my colleagues on the council, all of my colleagues on the Board of Supervisors for accepting and dedicating this time for finding solutions together. So thank you, Chair, and I appreciate... I appreciate the time.
I won't repeat what you said. We don't all need to say the same thing, but I certainly concur. And I know we've got some challenges ahead, both for the city and, well, for the region in general, for all the cities and towns. And I appreciate your one... Your help facilitating this meeting. And let's hope we'll have some good news, but I know that we've got some challenges too. So with that, I think, why don't we turn it over to staff? I think the first... Mr. Huckleberry, how would you like to proceed? We've got... Oh, let's identify Mr. Huckleberry, if you would, all the staff members from both... Well, from the county that have joined us. And then Mayor Romero, perhaps you can have Manager Ortega introduce the staff members you have present. So, Mr. Huckleberry, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Chair Bronson, members of the board, Mayor Romero and members of the council. We have at least two staff members prepared to answer questions if necessary. I will probably do most of the responses to these issues in the interest of time. Dr. Garcia and Dr. Cullen are available and will... Are joining us, so they are available for questions. And what we will do is, I think, is I will be happy to turn it over to Mr. Ortega, and he can introduce staff. He may want to... And if we come back, I can start with the vaccine rollout and be fairly brief, and then we can go from there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Huckleberry. Mr. Ortega, did you want to introduce your staff?
Sure, Chair Bronson, thank you, and members of the Board of Supervisors, Mayor Romero and City Council members. So I'll be doing most of the presenting today. I do have some staff members that are available in case we do get into detail. I do have some folks from our Housing and Community Development group that will be available if necessary. But we're, in the interest of time, going to try to keep the comments brief on our end so we can leave you time to deliberate the issues. Thank you.
And Chair Bronson, before we start, I just wanted to acknowledge the one item that we have on our agenda today is COVID-19 and everything that comes along with the logistics of fighting this pandemic. I think that right now, this particular pandemic brings us together for today's meeting and really has unified us because I know that both county and city have been working together in partnership to deal with the effects of the pandemic in public health and in the lives of residents of the city of Tucson and the residents of Pima County. And so I'm very happy that we have the opportunity to get ourselves on the same page, to continue deliberating and making decisions in partnership with the two governments. I wanted to, before we start with the presentations and on the agenda, I just wanted to offer our colleagues on the Tucson City Council and the Board of Supervisors to see if they had any commentary before we start with the presentations by County Administrator Huckleberry and Manager Ortega.
Any comments from board members or council members?
Supervisor Bronson? Yes. I just want to say how appreciative I am of everyone taking the time to get together or get on the same page. I think it's so critical considering the challenges that we have ahead, the financial hardships that so many in our community are dealing with, as well as the responsibility fiscally for us to do what we can to make sure that every precious dollar that is allocated to us is going as closely as we can to those that are in need and need our support. So I want to thank you all for taking time today, and I think it's going to be a really productive meeting. Thank you.
Any of my colleagues on the council?
I'll ask some questions to the county administrator after we hear the presentation. He sent out a fairly lengthy memo a couple days ago, and I've got some questions about that, or I'm interested in his presentation first.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mayor, I also have a couple of questions also after the end of the presentation. Thank you. This is Richard Fimbras.
Thank you, Councilmember Fimbras. Go ahead, Mr. Huckleberry.
Yes, Chair Bronson and members of the board and Mayor Romero, members of the council. Let me start off by the discussion about the vaccine rollout. We developed an accelerated vaccination plan and sent it to the state on January the 12th. That plan has been amended and supplemented with a disadvantaged community plan that also is accelerated and included in that plan. It consists of approximately today about 90 outlets that are qualified and registered to distribute the vaccine. We have concentrated on three general categories. One is what we called regional centers. In those regional centers, one of which is the Tucson Convention Center. We have five, and typically those regional centers were capable of vaccinating about 1,000 to 1,500 individuals per day. We also had a group of what we call community health centers that were also qualified and who also had panels, meaning that they had patients who met the qualifications. They were also empowered. And we've also developed what we call a mobile vaccination plan to reach the disadvantaged communities. It's had one event, and it will have many more, we hope, as vaccine supply increases. Just to give you an idea, we produce every... Twice a week, something called a vaccination report. And the latest one dated yesterday, February 18th, we've inoculated 203,000 individuals. That's about 16% of the population. If you look at first and second shots, 153,000 of those are first shots, and 50,000 are the second dose. So we have 50,000 individuals completely vaccinated. One of the strategies that we advanced, and as you recall, was it was plus 75 first, and then it went to plus 70, then it went to plus 65 as of yesterday. And to show you that we're actually making progress in that area, our vaccination report says of the individuals 70 and over in the community, they represent 14% of the regional population. The number that have been vaccinated to date is 43% of those individuals. So that targeted vaccination plan is working. I would like to pay special attention and give a lot of credit to the Tucson Convention Center. They've done more than we could ever ask them to do, and the city staff has been outstanding who's doing that work. They actually, I think, responded well to some chaotic supply issues associated with vaccines. In addition to that, I think they stood up what we call our first walk-up registration. And that first walk-up registration is for people who, for whatever reason, could not navigate the current system to get registered. And so that's been very, very helpful. We're hopeful that that will continue, and we know that as we're able to schedule more people into the system and add to the walk-up registration, that facility alone can probably vaccinate 2,500 individuals a day. So we don't have a real vaccine capacity problem, we have a vaccine supply problem. So with that, let me see if there's any questions or if City Manager Ortega has something to add. But again, I think the Tucson Convention Center has been extraordinarily successful. All of our other four sites, Tucson Medical Center, Banner North, Banner South, the UFA, have all been running about 1,000 vaccinations a day. The production, I think, just yesterday was a little under 6,000 vaccinations given in those sites.
Mr. Ortega?
Sure, Mayor, and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity. And Chair Bronson and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity. I had put together just a couple of quick numbers for you on the TCC, and I'm not sure if the county clerk got that. We sent that kind of late, but if they could put that up, that would be great. And it does have some information that coincides with what Mr. Huckleberry outlined. First and foremost, Mayor and City Council, you had given me authority to stand up and provide whatever support to Pima County was necessary on the vaccine. The TCC was, in fact, that effort, if you will. And so you can see the numbers there. Actually, I think that's the testing. We have another slide, which is the vaccine, so there we go, awesome. So as you can see, we have administered about 20,000, a combination of both first and second doses. We have about 70 employees on site every day, and that's a true partnership, not only with our internal departments, but also from county, TMC, et cetera. So we're very proud of that, and I think, as Mr. Huckleberry mentioned, our ability to pivot, quite frankly, on the dime to make sure that we're able to get the vaccines administered has been amazing. As Mr. Huckleberry mentioned, we do have a capacity, we think it's about 1,800. He could push us to about 2,500, but at this point, we're really averaging only about 1,000. So the issue is not the capacity that we have there, it's really the availability of vaccines, as previously mentioned. So with that, I just mentioned, we are spending about $15,000 a day every time that we're open. I know that's a lot of money, but we're happy to partner and participate. We are tracking our costs. We know that there is an effort ultimately to seek reimbursement from the state or the feds, and so we are working closely with Mr. Huckleberry and his staff, mayor and members of the council as well as board. Happy to answer questions on any of that information as needed. You can take the slide down now.
What?
Is somebody trying to speak?
Yes.
Could you identify yourself?
Paul Durham. How in the city of Tucson, Pima County, to expand mobile vaccination clinics to reach our most vulnerable communities?
Mayor, what I would suggest is that maybe we pass that over to Mr. Huckleberry. I know that we have partnered on mobile testing, and we have had some conversations internally about the availability of resources. Once those mobile testing, I know there has been some mobile testing that has occurred, but I guess I would pass that on to Pima County for some guidance on how best we might be able to help.
Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes, Chair Bronson and Councilmember Durham. What we have done and what we'll continue to do is identify disadvantaged community locations based on census tract information related to age, related ethnicity, and related income, as well as coupling those data sets with the number of infections occurring in those particular census tracts, hospitalizations, and deaths. And that data will then combine to give us the best idea about where we probably ought to be going. We will want to be scheduling, and our goal with vaccine supplies is schedule two to three of these mobile clinics per day, or not per day, per week, excuse me, and that each one would probably dispense about 500 vaccines. That was our experience with the first pilot, which occurred at, I think, St. John's Church. We will also, and I think the data sets that we are developing, we want to cross-coordinate those with the city staff, particularly the housing staff, as you deal with issues of the same things we deal with, to make sure we aren't missing anyone or missing any community that might... or missing any community that might be in this disadvantaged category. So I think we're putting together those programs. We had hoped to get them all off the ground, actually, a week ago. We had to postpone that because vaccine shortage. We had three scheduled for this weekend. They were postponed till next week because of vaccine shortage. And we are anxious to get out and get into the community because what the data shows us to date is that the large pods, and we can talk about first, the state 24/7 pod, it is not getting to the disadvantaged communities. The data is very clear that it's not reaching those individuals. Our regional facilities do a better job at reaching those disadvantaged because they're more dispersed and easier to get to. If we really want to get to disadvantaged communities, we've got to go mobile. In the first mobile experiment that we did as a pilot, just to see how it worked, just to see if we were going to be overwhelmed, if the community would respond, it worked very well. It was an outstanding, what we call, event. It vaccinated 511 people, all of them, most of them, all of them over the age of 70. 72% were Hispanic, and it was clear we were reaching who we intended to reach. And we intend to do more of those, and with the help of the city, making sure that we don't miss anyone, we will continue that.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie?
Supervisor Christie?
Would this be an appropriate time in the meeting to ask the county administrator some questions about reimbursement funding from the state?
I think we're probably, I'll let Mr. Huckleberry respond, but I think we'll get to that later. And I just had some, I have some information I want to share with Mr. Huckleberry quickly. And that is that Senator Kelly is meeting with the governor this afternoon, I think. So if you were not already aware of that, Mr. Huckleberry, that's my understanding at this point. But to Supervisor Christie's point, do you want to, you want to deal with some of the costs now? Or what would you, what would be your preference?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sure I think that falls under item G.
It does.
Chair Bronson?
I'll go ahead and wait with my questions for item G.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Christie. Mayor?
Just to continue the conversation on the vaccines and disadvantaged populations, I did read the memo that Mr. Huckleberry sent to the Board of Supervisors and has since shared with the community and with the mayor and council. And I do see that the intent of the mobile vaccination clinics were very targeted and accessible to disadvantaged communities and underrepresented communities. And I do understand the access and availability of vaccines is going to, if not has already started, to impact the amount of vaccines that are being distributed at the different pods. One of the concepts that we should at least talk about in terms of fair and equitable vaccine distribution is the location of vaccination sites. And we understand that at the Tucson Convention Center, we, our staff at the city of Tucson, our fire department, EMTs, paramedics, and everyone in the city that has contributed to the effort has been very successful. At the same time, as the U of A pod 24/7 site designated by the state starts ramping up, I would suggest, since the TCC is so close to the University of Arizona, that we consider, and I'm more than happy to put out there to my colleagues on the Tucson City Council and in partnership with Pima County, that we consider El Pueblo Activity Center as a possible vaccine site, as opposed to the TCC. And I'm just thinking of distribution, equitable distribution, or geographic distribution in terms of delivery of vaccines. So even though we have been very successful with the TCC, we could always pick up that site and the effort that we've put at the TCC and move it to El Pueblo Activity Center in order to reach more disadvantaged communities. And frankly, in the area where El Pueblo is located, those zip codes, 06 and 14, 85706 and 85714, have seen a huge amount of COVID-19 cases. So I put it out there because I know that the first mobile vaccine distribution event happened at St. John's, the evangelist, on Ajo and 12th Avenue. And that is something to consider. We don't have to make a decision or call right now. But because of the concern about getting the vaccines in the arms of working families and those that have been devastated by COVID-19, we could consider El Pueblo Activity Center as a possible site that the city of Tucson can help set up.
Madam Chair, I have, Madam Mayor, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Huckleberry.
Go ahead, Councilmember Fimbres.
Does Mr. Huckleberry want to respond to Mayor Romero first, and then we'll go to Councilmember Fimbres' questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, very simply, yes, we will consider that as a site that probably we will revisit several times in the mobile facility. I think everybody needs to remember, we've administered 200,000 vaccines to date. To get through the population that will probably accept the vaccination, we need to administer 1.6 million. So that means probably we'd still want to keep the TCC operational, but we certainly would actually go to all of these other locations as soon as we have vaccine supply.
Thank you, Mr. Huckleberry. Go ahead, Councilmember Fimbres.
Thank you, Madam Chairs. One of the things, Mr. Huckleberry, can you explain what, when you say you joined a temporary mobile site, what does that entail, and how do we notify the citizens of the community that we're having this event at that event? I know St. John's, they do a great job with Matias Pravicio there and Father Robert Gonzalez, reaching out, and they have the trust of the people. And I know that Pastor Scott, Pastor Otis Brown, and Pastor Amos Lewis also have the trust of the people, and they're willing to open up the sites for themselves, too. But another site suggestion would be the rodeo grounds. What we've done, some sites there, people can stay in their vehicles and do a drive-through. And it's helped and been successful. Again, also with El Pueblo, we had 8,500 masks given out, and all people staying in their vehicles. So that was another site that was present. And then another suggestion, since the university's a site 24 hours, I would like to see if we can extend that over to the Tech Park at Bridges and at the, what's it called, Bridges and Marketplace. It could be easily, because people can drive in right there where the university is and also get their shots. That might be another suggestion for you. But I'm interested to know, what kind of, beforehand, we're going to choose a site? How is that alerting, how do the people are known? Because we have 511 there that was good turnout. So what was the success of that that made it happen?
Yes, Chair Bronson and Councilmember Fimbres, it was exactly as you said. We contacted the church leaders, and then they contacted their congregation. And that's how that worked, through word of mouth and notification. We will do the same thing. We had scheduled one at Christ Community Church, and again, that's working through the black pastors to get that population there. So that's the key, is we go into these sites, is to go into the communities and go into the individuals who know those communities, to notify the individuals and get them in for vaccination.
Thank you, Mr. Huckleberry.
I have a couple of questions about vaccines while we're on this item, if this is an appropriate time.
Go ahead, Councilmember Kazachik.
I want to pivot to the supply question. In the memo that county administrator put out, it indicates that Dr. Garcia has concerns about our vaccination sites nearing or getting down to zero supply by next week. We've requested, you've requested nearly 40,000 doses. Have we had any response from the ADOH on that request yet?
Yes, Councilmember Kazachik, not much, other than a decreased allocation again this week. Our allocations went from 17.3 or 17.8 to 16.3 to this week. I think it's 12,500. So we're seeing decreased supplies. Of the decrease this week, we do not know if it's weather-related. All we know is that our Moderna allocation went down about 5,000 doses. We've asked the state, and we did make a call over the university to see if they were over there. And they aren't, they're zero. And so we asked the state to tell us where the 5,000 doses went, and obviously do not have an answer yet.
Do we know what the impact of the state-run pod on the mall is with respect to our own supply? Is it a negative, or is it no impact?
Councilmember Kazachik, at this point, you know, timing of opening it is not great because our supplies are going down. I don't think we can directly correlate our decrease to their increase. They're using a Pfizer product. The state has basically nationalized all the Pfizer, so they're controlling all the Pfizer allocations. We do know that the state and the university has about 14,000 doses of Pfizer. And so we're encouraging them to get them out. And it sounds like they're trying to ramp up to get, it sounds like 1,300 doses today. We'll see where it goes. I'm not sure how many they did yesterday. I think the problem is, is that, of course, we needed an additional capacity once we have a supply, but we didn't need it right now. And so that's the difficulty.
And in your memo, though, you mentioned Pfizer, that Pima County is receiving 10% of the state's supply, and Maricopa County is getting 90%. Have we had any adjustment to our allocation with that ratio?
Councilmember Kazachik, no, we haven't. And like I said, we only, we're able to discern that over the reports on the state's website. And since Pfizer was only being used in Maricopa and Pima County, that means that 90% of the Pfizer went to Maricopa County. So now, previously, our pods, the only ones that were using Pfizer were the hospital-based, and so that's TMC and Banner North. Banner South always used Moderna. So the issue, and we do know that the Pfizer allocation to TMC and to Banner North has decreased.
So it seems to me that the timing of the U of A opening up this mall has not been helpful with respect to our regional effort to stand up mobile sites and touch some of the most vulnerable populations. Question perhaps for one of the medical people on the call. You've suggested going to a tiered allocation process, and tier three now are second-dose vaccines. Would you recommend that people who have had a first dose not go and get their second dose so we can at least get as many first doses in people's arms as possible? Or should we stay on track with respect to going numbers one and two? Dr. Garcia?
Chair Bronson, members of the board, Mayor Romero, members of council, Councilman Kazachik, the recommendation currently continues to be that we provide folks their second dose. We do think that eventually the vaccine supply will loosen up. We know that we are having some stress in the system right now, precisely because we have been very efficient utilizers of our first doses. There is not a lot of reserve in the system. But at this time, we are not recommending that people purposefully defer their second vaccination. Please understand that there is a window. People don't have to get it exactly at three or four weeks. The window actually goes out to six weeks. So we have a little bit of latitude, and at this time, our recommendation for that has not changed.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Cunningham?
Good morning. Want to thank the Board of Supervisors and my colleagues on the council. This is one of our better, this is one of the better exercises that we do, and it should be a little bit more regular. This should be a two, twice-a-year standing meeting. It always should have been, and it's something that we ought to consider long-term. I want to give a, I definitely want to give a kudos to the Pima County Health Department. First of all, for those of you who are listening and watching online, a few things. I always like to compare us with Maricopa County, because I love bragging about how much better we are than that. In this case, 21% of our total population, well, our ratio in total jabs, that's the total number of inoculations. Now, some of that is second doses, but when you consider every inoculation we've done, we have a 21% ratio of the total inoculations versus the number of people in Pima County. In Maricopa County, even though they have the extra state pod, they're only at 19%. So we're winning, too. 37% of our jabs have gone to people over the age of 65. In Maricopa County, it's only 33%. So we're winning there, too. The other thing is, is that the, and probably, and this is probably a little bit more nuanced, but what's interesting to me is if you don't consider the state POD, Maricopa County has not done the same effort that Pima County Health Department has done in just ramping up all the different avenues for sites. I also want to thank them for standing, helping us stand up the TCC site right away. I think it's one of our biggest successes. It allowed us some flexibility within the system. It allowed us to get more jabs into arms. So I'm really proud of that. A couple of things to go over the staff this morning really quick. One is, I'm seeing that there's some faulty in the supply. I wanted to know and answer at the end, are we at the direct mercy of the state health department on whether or not our allotment changes? Can we go to the federal government? Can we go directly to Moderna or Pfizer? I don't know. I don't want to get us in trouble, but at the same time, being at the state's mercy has never worked out for Pima County. So I just wonder what other activities. I also wanted to thank everyone on the dashboard accuracy. Our dashboard accuracy is terrific. However, I do want to point out to Dr. Garcia, not that it's a big deal. I know there was a holiday Monday, but this week's Thursday update has not posted yet. So I just wanted to, you know, mention.
Councilmember Cunningham, I'm going to interrupt you in the interest of time. We've got a number of items to cover.
I got a few more things. One is, I want to talk about rides and transport to sites. I want to talk about admin fees at Walgreens and CVS, and understand if Walgreens and CVS's jabs at critical care facilities are counted in our data dashboard. I want to talk, I want to talk about the $100 million in testing reimbursement to see if that's going to help us so we can continue testing. And finally, I want to talk about the second part of the vaccine rollout. So these are all the things that I wanted to cover this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. In the interest of time, I agree with Chair Bronson. Maybe we could have either Dr. Garcia or Chuck answer your questions, and then we can move to chatting.
Or we could have the councilmembers submit the questions and get some written responses.
Okay, absolutely.
Chair Bronson, let me just give you a quick answer. Yes, we are at the mercy of the state at berries week to week. And I think we ought to keep talking because Dr. Garcia just notified me that we got an additional allocation of 4,000 doses. So we're back at 17,000 doses for next week.
That's great news.
That may be the only good news we get today. I don't know.
Hopefully, they keep, hopefully, the good news keeps coming. Chair Bronson, if you'd like, we can...
Chair Bronson, if you'd like, we can move on to testing on the agenda.
Yes, let's move on now. Would that be Mr. Huckleberry or Dr. Garcia, who wants to, or Dr. Cullen? Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes, let me briefly go through it. And again, we also appreciate the city of Tucson because you've, I think, pledged $4 million of your CARES Act relief money for testing. Testing has been a big issue. The county has spent probably as of this date about $45 to $50 million on testing of our CARES Act allocation of 87.1. So, as a public health agency, we did what we thought was appropriate, and that is fund testing in a fairly wide span of time and location. There's been a discussion recently with regard to testing. We've had a number of sites set up throughout the county. During the peak period of January, when the infection rate was about the highest, we were averaging 3,000 tests per day. We're down now probably to about 1,500 tests per day, and over a week period, that amounts to a cost of about $2 million. So, it gives you a scope concept about how much has been spent. Since January 1st, we have provided 56,000 tests to residents of Pima County up until a couple of days ago. And the state has been providing ASU saliva testing, and they also took over the testing that we set up at the airport on January 1st. At that site, they've tested 5,500 individuals. Our expenses since January 1 are $10.7 million. By now, it's probably eleven and a half million. And as you can see, if we spend $2 million a week, it adds up fairly quickly. One of the items that I asked the board to consider is whether or not we are going to be receiving any of the $416 million the state received. It was appropriated by Congress in late December. The money was sent to the state on January 14th. I think the mayors and the chair sent a letter to the governor asking about the dispersal of those funds two or three weeks ago. The chair just sent another letter recently asking for those funds in both vaccination as well as testing. We received a response two days ago from the state that said that we might get $1 million, but it had to go through their contractor, who happens to be our contractor ironically. And so, we were faced with a dilemma of, do we continue testing? Do we finance vaccination? What do we do? And the answer was, we would finance vaccination over testing, or we could run the county budget into the red. And that's was the dilemma we're faced. We finally heard yesterday at what we call a lower call, which is where all the state health directors are around the counties, are on a call with the state health officials, that they might be allocating $100 million of that funds for the purpose of testing. Every county would get a base $100,000, and they distribute the rest on the basis of population. So, Pima County would get about $14 million, a little bit more. Our reaction to that is that the state has no idea who is doing what on the ground, simply because of all of the counties doing COVID-19 PCR testing, Pima County is doing the most. If you were to add up all these other counties doing COVID-19 PCR testing, we're probably doing 90%. So, our expenses, if we continue on through August, are going to run into the $41 million range. So, you can see that $14.3 million doesn't go very far when your continuing expenses are running into the $41 million range. And so, we would hope that the state would actually get some, you know, on-the-ground experience as to what's occurring, because if they did, they'd know that we were doing most of the testing in Arizona as a county. So, we're hopeful that they can figure that out. The action that the board, I had asked them to do based on the press release, that's the only notice we've gotten from the state, is that we obviously can continue testing until March 2nd, which is the next board meeting to try and find out if, in fact, the state's going to allocate more money. Or our option would be to have the state take over all of our contracts as of that date, and then they can worry about paying the contractors. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Huckleberry. They're always going to ask the question, so we basically have enough money to get us through March 2nd. Is that what you're saying? For testing?
Yes, yes, we do.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair. I was under the impression this kind of discussion was going to be saved on the agenda item under G, but it was brought up. At this point, would you still prefer that we hold off questions on that till we get to G? Or could I?
Well, if this is specific to testing, ask your question for Mr. Huckleberry.
How old the cost element that Mr. Huckleberry was referring to, to item G, but I just want to ask Mr. Huckleberry and Dr. Garcia about a recent study by the John Hopkins School of Medicine and the Bloomberg School of Public Health that announced that their investigations show that COVID cases have officially fallen 77% over the last six weeks. And the John Hopkins School of Medicine that did the study suggests that herd immunity is responsible for the drastic drop, and I quote, "Natural immunity from prior infection is far more common than can be measured by testing." Testing has been capturing only from 10% to 25% of infections, and that would mean about, based on when the infections were first received or first indicated, that 55% of Americans have natural immunity. And they go on to say that at the current trajectory, COVID will be mostly gone by April, and hopefully allowing a return to some sense of normalcy. I'm just wondering, this report reflects that obviously the testing really is not that effective, yet we've been doing it for a number of months now at a great expense. Dr. Garcia, what would your comments be about this study from John Hopkins School of Medicine?
Miss, Madam Chair, let me start, and I'll let Dr. Garcia finish.
Yeah, and again, in the interest of time, I think we need to get to some facts, and I don't know that this is relevant to making sure everybody has the facts, but if we could, again, we have very limited time, so if we can, if you can answer quickly, and we're still have to do mask-using curfew, evictions, business restrictions, federal funds, that's item G, I think the one that interests Supervisor Christie. So, again, I just caution my colleagues, we want to get through all of these items, and we have very short time to do it.
Thank you. And after Mr. Huckleberry answers, Chair, if we could have Mr. Ortega present on the city's Tucson efforts in testing, and then we can move to the next item.
Madam Chair, very quickly, and I think I'll let, you know, the issue of testing is vital. It's important. It's the only way we're able to isolate infected individuals and keep them from spreading COVID-19 to others. So, it continues to be extraordinarily important. If you take the data with regard to the number of infections we have to date in Pima County, yet we have maybe 10% who might have some immunity, but I would caution that immunity is questionable as to how long it exists. And if you then take, we vaccinated 50,000 who have the second dose, that's 5% of our population. So, maybe we're at 15% herd immunity, and we need to get to 85%.
I make a quick comment on that, also, I'll make a real brief. You have to remember, we have to remember that any reduction in the infection rate is coming from an extremely high level. The levels that we're seeing right now exceed the peak last summer. So, any percentage that Supervisor Christie is throwing out, that has to be taken into consideration. Remember the context. In addition to that, the testing was extremely important. When we were identifying testing surges in congregate settings, in particular, the towers around the UVA Mall, it helped us not only for isolation but for contact tracing. And if you recall, back after the UVA opened last September, they had an RNa value of over two in that area. That was the highest one in the region, and that was extremely helpful for that. And finally, respected this disappearing by April, it was about April last year that we had a president saying it was going to disappear in the summer. So, I think we've heard that, we've sung that tune before.
Thank you, Councilmember Kazachik. Mr. Ortega?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I do have a quick slide, just again, to show some numbers. If the clerk can put them up, that'd be great. I won't go through that, I'll let you all read those. We too are looking pretty tough on some dollars in terms of expenses. The $9 million will be through the end of February. As Mr. Huckleberry mentioned, the council initially allocated about $4 million, but we have been burning up money as well. And that's on both fronts, as far as helping with the testing effort at Udall, as well as El Rio Health over at El Pueblo, as well as some of our pop-up testing. I think what will be important is, depending on the direction from the county, ultimately, I may need to come back to the council and say, if we aren't going to have the county as a partner in that testing effort because of their finances or because of their decisions on a policy level, then we'll need to make something similar. No decision's necessary right this minute. As you heard, we do have enough to get us through the end of the month, but that may be something coming, Mayor and members of the city council. Very happy to answer questions in the interest of time, also, we don't have too much time on us. You can take a slide down now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ortega, Chair Bronson, and Mr. Huckleberry. I believe the costs for testing to this date have been anywhere from $1.3 to $1.8 million. We do want to be partners in the planning efforts of how we continue as a community with vital testing to know where COVID-19 is hitting our community the greatest. I agree that testing has to continue for the benefit of the health of Tucsonans and Pima County residents. The city of Tucson, its mayor and council was very, very clear that with the $9 million that we chose to contribute to the testing puzzle here in the city of Tucson and Pima County, it was very important. But as Mr. Ortega just mentioned, those CARES funds are going to end at the end of February. So, we on the mayor and council side want to support your efforts in Pima County, understand that, you know, you have the public health experts to be able to guide us and give mayor and council and the community input as to what's the plan B for testing if there's no support by the state of Arizona. Maybe what we have to do is find a less expensive way, and then, as you said, Mr. Huckleberry, leave it up to the state to pick up the testing sites that we currently have, and then maybe possibly find a less expensive, they could, the state could find a less expensive way to do the necessary testing according to the facts, right? According to what public health experts deem necessary for testing in Pima County. So, wanted to open up for any additional questions, or Chair Bronson, I don't know how you wanted to proceed with this particular item.
I think we've, unless Mr. Huckleberry or Mr. Ortega have anything else to add, I think we've pretty much hit where we need to be with testing. So, I think let's move on to mask usage, if that's okay with you, Mayor.
That's absolutely good.
So, Mr. Huckleberry, mask usage comments?
Yes, Chair Bronson, members of the board, and Mayor Romero. I'll be very brief and then turn it over to City Manager Ortega. We have a mask ordinance, we have a mask requirement. It remains in place. It is probably one of the cheapest, most effective public health measures that we can employ to keep the spread of COVID-19 down, along with all the other standard things about keep your distance, wash your hands, do all the other things that do not, are not difficult. And so, I don't think you'll see at least a recommendation from me anytime soon about modifying or rescinding our mask requirements in the county, and they are county-wide as a public health agency, so we will continue those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Bronson and Mr. Huckleberry. Members of the city council, as you know, our ordinance is still in place, pretty much tracks with the county's ordinance. I do not see anytime soon making a recommendation to rescind that, and so, we'll continue to monitor the numbers and watch, but we will certainly be in cooperation with our county health department partners. Mayor and Chair Bronson, one thing that I know we're running short on time, Mr. Huckleberry and I did discuss providing a written report to both the council and the Board of Supervisors addressing some of the questions, so we're trying to keep notes on the questions that you all are asking. Then we will provide you with the written response after this meeting that we can both sign to give you the information that we may not get to today to answer. That's all, Chair Bronson and Mayor.
Chair Bronson.
Yeah, who's that?
Supervisor Christie.
I think Councilmember Lee had her hand raised.
Thank you, Chair Bronson. That was from a previous item, and I am good to take my questions offline, but thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Very good.
Supervisor Christie.
Mr. Huckleberry answered the same question at the last board meeting, and I'd like to ask Mr. Ortega, in the mask ordinance in the city of Tucson, how many complaints have resulted in any kind of fines or imposition of penalties by law enforcement since it's gone into effect in the city?
Mayor, Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I'll have to get back to you with a specific number. I know that we have issued many warnings and many opportunities for folks to comply. Most of the time, when enforcement action is to be taken, people come into compliance, we just bring it to their attention, but happy to provide that information to you and righty after the meeting.
Mr. Ortega, just to be able to respond to Supervisor Christie, when mayor and council decided to institute our mask mandate back in June 17th, a few days before the governor untied the hands of mayors across Arizona, as well as counties such as Pima County, we were very deliberate at mayor and council level that even though we instituted a fine for no mask-wearing, that it was going to be an effort, an educational effort, that educational effort was much more worth and helpful for the community to understand how important wearing a mask and how cheap, frankly, it is to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. We at mayor and council felt very strongly that the time and effort of our police officers was not going to be spent standing on corners giving tickets to people because they were not wearing masks. As a matter of fact, many of our police officers carried masks and brought it to the atti- As a matter of fact, many of our police officers carried masks and brought it to the attention of many individuals, which, by the way, Tucsonans were absolutely happy to comply with, most of them. And so we felt that such a simple health measure was necessary, and according to the numbers and the public health experts and the science behind it, it really is, it really is something that helps prevent the spread. And so, yeah, no, we're not going to have our police officers stand in corners giving tickets because people are not wearing masks.
Thank you, Your Honor, for that. I will still look forward to Mr. Ortega's numbers of noncompliant use in the city of Tucson. Mr. Huckleberry reported to us that same question at the last meeting, that there were no issuances of any kind of penalties that he knew of in the county, in the unincorporated area of Pima County regarding noncompliance. So it'd be interesting to see the comparison of the two. I think for another time in another place, we could probably discuss the efficacy of mask wearing and what it does to the community, and at least what I'm getting from my constituents. But I appreciate the explanation, Your Honor, and I look forward to Mr. Ortega's numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Bronson, would you like to move forward, or are there any council colleagues or board members that would like to contribute to this item?
Masks are so worthless in the healthcare community, wouldn't be suggesting double masking to control the variant strains.
Well said.
Your Honor, I just had a couple of questions. I wanted to know whether or not we can institute, I know it's a little late in the game for this, but if we, the supply chain for KN95 and KN95 masks was significantly challenged early on in the process, but it seems with the new strains and variants, that if we can locate KN95-level masks and help distribute them, I think that would definitely make a dent in the spread of virus. So for me, I'd be willing to go in on a joint effort, depending on whether or not we can allocate dollars from this $100 million, or whether or not we cut back. It looks like we're going, our testing capacity can be reduced a little bit, our public testing capacity can be reduced, and we reapply those dollars into KN95 distribution, I think that would be a much better opportunity for us. So that's kind of my two cents on that, but other than that, I want to move on in the interest of time.
Thank you. So let's then move on to curfew. Mr. Huckleberry.
Chair Bronson, members of the board, Mayor Romero, members of the council, this will be a very short update. We lost in the Superior Court our public health authority to impose a curfew, and it has now been appealed to the Arizona Court of Appeals, and we will await its scheduling and will argue our public health authority that has already been upheld by previous Supreme Court cases.
Mayor and Chair Bronson, as you might recall, the city of Tucson did have an ordinance. We allowed that to expire on December 23rd, I believe was the date, given that Pima County had the ordinance, so we don't have one in effect today, other than the counties, which is countywide, including the city of Tucson.
Thank you. Any comments from board members, council members?
Madam Chair, just to be clear on both of Mr. Ortega's and Mr. Huckleberry's statements, as of right now, there is no curfew ordinance in effect. Is that, that's a correct statement, in both the city and the county.
Chair Bronson, the order has been nullified by the Superior Court, but it is on appeal to the Court of Appeals, so it is not in effect today.
Thank you.
We do not have Supervisor Christie, we do not have an ordinance currently in the city of Tucson.
Thank you for that clarity, I appreciate it, thank you.
Chair Bronson?
Supervisor, or Mayor, sorry, I thought I was, I thought I saw Supervisor Christie raise his hand again. Mayor?
Yes, I would put on the table for consideration for my colleagues on the mayor and council, and if it's needed or necessary in amicus from the city of Tucson on that appeal, I don't know if, you know, I'm not an attorney, and I don't suppose I know the procedural steps necessary, but the city of Tucson would consider an amicus, if that's still a possibility and necessary for the case from Pima County.
Mr. Huckleberry, would you like to comment, or Mr. Flag? I think he, our county attorney is with us.
Chair Bronson, I'll turn it over to Andy, but we could use all the help we could get.
Mr. Flag, did you want to comment?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mayor Romero, and members of the council, I think the county would welcome amicus support. There will be a briefing scheduled put in place, and I can certainly be in touch with the city attorney to discuss that.
So you, are you going to contact Mr. Rankin, or?
Madam Chair, yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
And I do see, Madam Chair, Mr. Our city attorney, Mr. Rankin, is with.
Yes, and I think he raised his hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mayor, and I have had some preliminary discussions with Mr. Flag as well, the county attorney's office, and we're happy to help out as we can with the preparation of an amicus brief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion from the mayor and council to direction, or do you have what you need?
I would appreciate that, yes, so that the authority to do so is clear.
A move that we give the city attorney the authority to join the county in an amicus brief with respect to this item.
That motion is seconded.
So on the council side, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It sounds like we have a unanimous vote to support Pima County with an amicus on their case regarding curfew.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Alrighty, Chair, if we can move on to eviction.
Mr. Huckleberry, did you want to comment on that?
Very briefly, and then I'll turn it over to City Manager Ortega, I think he probably has more than I do. The county and the city have been working together very well with regard to eviction prevention and the distribution of funding that's been received from the various federal agencies to reduce eviction. Our issue is one that I think I've communicated with the board this morning on, and that is a degree of transparency that we need in our justice court system that we do not have today, and we will hopefully push forward and obtain that information, and the issue of evictions that are anecdotal could either be confirmed by fact or not. So that's what our report is, but I do appreciate the city's assistance in the area of housing, as I believe you have more to do with housing than county does. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huckleberry, Mayor, members of the council, and Chair Bronson and board members. So there's a few things going on with regard to this topic. First and foremost, we appreciate very much the county's participation and assistance through the constable's offices, also through their housing department, as we partner to address this important topic. Today, constables have resources available to them, mostly through our housing department, and what ends up happening is, as a constable finds themselves serving the writ for eviction, the opportunity then to either negotiate with the landlord, or provide a list of services through the housing department, and through our housing function then comes into play. So a couple of pieces of that. First and foremost, the constables don't have money, if you will, by which to negotiate with the landlord, it's basically just them trying to talk on behalf of the renter. So as you are aware, we did receive about $16.2 million in rental assistance. The thought is to include that into the mix, to give the constables an opportunity to at least identify a source of funding for some of these discussions. On a bigger scale, though, with our partnership with Pima County, the Community Investment Corp. has partnered with us to assist us in distributing those dollars, those monies that have been allocated to the city. There's criteria for that, those that have lost their job and meet 50% of AMI, and that's a federal requirement, federal requirement, and if the applicant meets those criteria, then they can actually see their arrears paid for, as well as up to three months going forward of both rent and utility assistance. So we are working very closely to put that together with CIC. We have established a relationship with them and expanded what we've been doing in the past. We know that there's a lot of folks in the community that are struggling and dealing with this, and so Mayor and City Council, I know you've been very much interested in us pushing hard to not only allocate the dollars that were in, you know, previous CRF allocations, you previously allocated in excess of $6 million for that effort, which has been very efficient and effective through our partners within the community to address this. So I guess what I'm suggesting is, we've still got a lot of need, we do have some game plans in play, we are working closely with our partners at Pima County to make sure that those dollars get out very, very, very quickly, as quickly as possible. Mayor and Chair Bronson, happy to answer questions.
Any questions from board members or council members?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie here.
Supervisor Christie.
I'd like to request maybe that, very quickly, you give the mayor and council a brief update on the actions of the board of supervisors regarding the reconsideration element on this subject that we voted on and passed at the last board meeting.
Mr. Huckleberry, did you want to comment? I think what we did, we, as you know, there has been an action taken by the state legislature, several state legislators who referred our action when it came to extending evictions, referred it to the AG to see if we were in violation of state law. We have not had, well, Mr. Huckleberry, have we had a response, or we were supposed to respond, I think by yesterday, was it not, to those allegations?
Madam Chair, if that's correct, I think Andy can probably fill in the details. The action of the board on Tuesday at least mooted the complaint filed against the county by two legislators. We forwarded, I think, that fact to the Attorney General, and we'll see what comes from that discussion. In the meantime, I believe the matter is back on the board's discussion, I believe, for the March 2nd meeting, of which we are trying to do a great deal of fact-finding right now, and to provide a more comprehensive report to the board, so that the board can consider whether to reinstate that action or take other actions.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just to piggyback what Mr. Huckleberry stated, also, in that discussion of the board meeting, it was noted very strongly that all stakeholders on all sides of this issue would be brought to the table for discussion and input, so that some resolution could be made comprehensively and collaboratively and fairly among all those that are affected by any kind of eviction situation. And I think that was a very important step we took, and I'm hoping that mayor and council consider all elements of this issue, all people involved, be they landlords or renters, that this whole process affects both greatly and does need to have community-wide input and discussion. So thank you for that update, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, and I believe Mr. Flag had his hand raised. Did you have any comments, Mr. Flag?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mayor Romero, members of the council, I can just confirm what Mr. Huckleberry said, we did respond to the Attorney General that the moratorium had for the time being been rescinded, and therefore the investigation should be mooted out. I have not heard a response from the Attorney General, but I assume they'll dismiss it.
Thank you. And thank you for the update. Just to add to the rent and utility assistance and mortgage assistance, that the city of Tucson, in its strategic plan for our CARES funds, we have used more than $10 million in terms of rent and utility assistance and mortgage assistance, and so that has helped more than 3,000 individuals and families in the city of Tucson. And in all of our actions for the usage of CARES funds, the mayor and council decided to be inclusive of the city of South Tucson. And so all of our programs, including rent and utility assistance and mortgage assistance, and all of the other programs that we created to help our community, the residents of the city of South Tucson were included in being able to use these programs. Mayor and council also took steps to create a moratorium on our own, city of Tucson-owned housing, and we've extended that moratorium till the end of March for city of Tucson-owned properties. So, you know, just wanted to add to that, it is unfortunate that Representative Leach really, you know, attacked the county for creating a humane policy to not see people leaving or being evicted from their homes, and I'm hoping that this coming $1.9 trillion relief package introduced by President Biden can continue helping the city, the city of Tucson cities and counties throughout the United States and receive direct funding to continue helping families and individuals to keep shelter over their heads. Anyone on the council that would like to contribute to this discussion?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Heinz.
Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you, and it's really good to be here. I hope we do these, I think not often, but regularly. On the topic of eviction, is I think something that has come forward in the discussions that we've had during the last couple of board meetings, and just as we all have been doing our own fact-finding, is that in a substantial majority of these cases, the defendant or the tenant is not represented. And when you have a judge or, you know, a court that is faced with a plaintiff and no defense, or plaintiff and a plaintiff's attorney, in this case, a landowner, landlord and their attorneys, or just their attorneys, and nobody on the side of the tenant, the result is pretty much a foregone conclusion. That, we, I believe, really need to fix, because a lot of this would stop or slow if those tenants were to have some mechanism, to have some kind of legal defense or legal counsel to represent them in these proceedings, which is not currently required, of course. So I think that's something we need to look at going forward, and, yeah, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Supervisor Heinz. Mr. Huckleberry, do you have any comments?
Chair Bronson and Supervisor Heinz, the material I sent this morning said that that is one of the flaws, and that there are some justices of the peace who spend some time with an individual in the eviction process, and others who spend two minutes. So that needs some consistency. We will, and have been contacting legal aid. We will and have been contacting legal aid for some type of contractual assistance, as well as contacted the U of A Law School for intern law students providing some and similar assistance. So, we're working on that because we do know it is one of the problems.
Thank you, Mr. Huckleberry. Any other comments by board members, council members? Mayor, do you want to move on to business restrictions?
Yes, Chair Bronson.
Mr. Huckleberry, do you have any comments?
I'll be as brief as I can be. Things are getting better. And when things get better, what that means is, six weeks ago, and we distribute these dot maps, I think, once a week to, I believe, everyone. Six weeks ago, the weekly infection was 5,000. This last, most recent map, it's down to 1,060. So, that's an improvement. The trajectory is in the right direction and appears to be accelerating in the right direction. It's still above some of the thresholds that we set for talking about reopening and looking at reopening certain things. We are looking at that. We're monitoring that very, very carefully. Both Dr. Cullen and Dr. Garcia are doing that. We are cautiously optimistic that if things continue the way they are, we will begin to open up and lift some of the restrictions. Most of those will start with parks. Reopening park facilities and talking about organized sporting events and things of that nature. They will still have requirements. They will still be distance requirements. There will still be mask requirements. But we will talk about opening those things up if the trend continues. And it's very, very important to understand the trend continuing. The daily infections have fluctuated widely. At this point, they're staying mostly in the 100 to 200 range per day, whereas before they were ranging in 800 to 900 a day. So, I think our biggest concern is that the trend is real and that the variants, if they begin to appear, don't reverse that trend.
That's all I have. I'll let Council, City Manager Ortega.
Somebody was trying to talk.
Oh, that's okay. I can, I just wanted to know what the threshold would be for reopening. You mentioned 5,000 infections. This week, we're down about to 1,000. When might we start considering? Just because I anticipate that will be a question.
And I think the other thing we haven't addressed in terms of business, this was business restrictions. But as you mentioned already, Mr. Huckleberry, we're looking at our parks. But I think that the other piece that we hear very often at board meetings from the public are schools. And, you know, what is the county role as we, if the trend is in the right direction, does the county have a role when it comes to prescribing what, when in-person learning can occur?
Chair Bronson, and let me answer Supervisor Rahalva's question first. And either Dr. Cullen or Dr. Garcia can interrupt me if I'm wrong. But I think it's the typical two-week rolling average of infections dropping below 100 per 100,000. I think we're still over 200 at this point in time. But again, we recalculate that every day and you roll the seven-day average into it. So, when we start getting below 100, we get back into that green zone that we were talking about, you know, some time ago. So, we've got a ways to go, but, you know, the trajectory, in other words, what we call the acceleration of how things are improving, is very good. But that doesn't mean it can't be reversed fairly quickly. With regard to schools, what we've said is that it's frankly the school district's decision. We will continue to provide the best public health advice we can to the district, but it's really up to the individual school district board to make that decision. And that's, you know, all we can say about it. The only thing that is a little concerning is that our more recent infections in schools have been with high school school activities that are athletic, basketball.
Yeah. And just, Supervisor Bronson, just to add to that, TUSD teachers are returning to school on the 22nd of March, is the current plan. And then, depending on the grade, students are starting either the 24th or 25th. 6 through 12 are hybrid, and elementary, K through 5, will be in person full-time. So, other school districts have already opened or are planning on it near future, Sunnyside and our neighboring district in Pima County. And really, the only restrictions that we've had thus far are in using county facilities for sports, tournaments, that kind of stuff. That stuff has still been on hold. And I agree with Mr. Huckleberry that the concern is really the contact sports that are going on, and that's where the infection is happening.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Thank you. We talked about schools and we talked about parks. We left out one very vulnerable community at risk, and that's our business community that has been dealing with the series of restrictions on their operations since last year. As we all know, many are shuttered. Many people that work for these businesses are out of work. They're faced daily with trying to put food on their tables. And I have had this discussion with my colleagues on the Board of Supervisors many times, so they're familiar with my feelings on this. And I'd like to take this opportunity to ask the mayor and the council, particularly her honor, who has made it very clear that Tucson, the city of Tucson, is going to be a welcoming community to undocumented persons, that all are welcome and that every effort is going to be made to accommodate those folks who want to come here from other countries and that Tucson will be available to assist them and to accommodate them. My question is, given the amount of letters and emails and phone calls that I am getting from constituents who are literally in tears and ridden with anxiety over the future of their investment or their businesses, what do you folks, how do you respond? But they're dealing with all of these issues. On one side, they're trying to comply with all of these restrictions that are crippling their business. And then, on the other side, being a welcoming community to people who don't live here. I'd just like to hear some direction on how I could respond when I'm asked those kinds of questions.
Madam Chair and Mayor, this is City Attorney Mike Rankin. I'm not sure how this is a topic that's on the agenda for discussion.
I was just headed in that direction. Thank you.
Yeah. On the business restriction side, you know, the city of Tucson, in our strategic plan to use our CARES funds, small businesses are the ones that, really, amongst many others, individuals, we've all gone through very, very difficult times. But our small businesses, our small restaurants have really, have really been devastated by the pandemic. And so, in order to address the item on the agenda, which is business restrictions and business in general, the mayor and council allocated more than $5 million in small business assistance grants. And so, again, small businesses throughout the city of Tucson received and were recipients of small business assistance grants for their survival. We understand that restrictions to small businesses really devastated, devastated our community businesses. And so, we have to continue advocating. I understand that the new $1.9 trillion Biden administration rescue package will have, again, funds directly through PPP for small businesses. They will have funding for grants. And we're hoping that they also have, that the federal government has direct funding for counties and cities, just like the CRF package did because of those type of packages, we can allocate, as a city, as a county, direct assistance to our small businesses. My question is, Mr. Huckleberry, is what are the current restrictions still in place for small businesses, specifically restaurants in Pima County?
Yes, Chair Bronson and Mayor O'Meara, those are all still in place. They were put in place by a governor's executive order. They were not put in place by the county or the city. And they remain in effect, as far as I know. And they are limiting occupancy to 50% and with a series of other restrictions. So, all of the governor's executive orders remain in place.
Okay. Chair Bronson or any of my colleagues on the council have any questions or comments?
Yes, Your Honor, I just wanted to make a point that on multiple levels, the bottom line here is that we, everyone in here knows that the restaurants and people who work in the restaurant industry were probably the most significantly hit. We talked about this a month ago. We've been really active in the city in trying to provide that relief and hopefully, long-term, be able to either restart or re-kick in some of those businesses so they can be rejuvenated after we come out of this. But the reality stands clear that, again, from what I remember, we had a briefing back in June, or it could have been in August, in which we were seeing, that was where the at-risk, that was where the majority of the at-risk was, that late night park. So, I think we've done our best in trying to be coordinated. I don't know what the other pieces of discussion has anything to do with this discussion. Again, what I just want to tell you is that we were anticipating a 15% to 20% drop in business activity through the pandemic. Tucson, the city limits sales tax revenues are only down 4%. So, the hit from a business activity standpoint, while significant, has not been what we anticipated. And as we move forward and we see those numbers go down, which, I'm an optimist, too. I think that we'll see the numbers we need to open parks and open schools and open everything else over the next three to six months. But we have to be cautious in doing it. We don't want to be, we don't want that backlash. I think everybody on this, on both boards are on the same page on that one. So, again, rather than try to pinpoint some philosophical positions that have nothing to do with discussion, I just ask everyone that we focus on what's at hand, and that is how we, what our long-term COVID planning pre and post-pandemic is.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Heinz.
Supervisor Heinz, proceed.
Thank you. I have two things, really quickly. If Mr. Huckleberry could just let everybody know the estimated number of teachers we are working toward vaccinating at this point. And I know they started, obviously, a bit more recently. But the, how many teachers approximately we have been able to vaccinate, at least with one dose at this point, I think that would be just a helpful piece of information for the public. And then, I had one other comment specific to business restrictions.
Mr. Huckleberry, do you have a comment? Or do you have that information at the moment? Or want to provide it later?
Chair Bronson, we'll provide it later. But let me give you what we think we know, and that's 25,000 teachers plus, probably, a majority of them have had one dose. We don't know how many have had two doses. We can try and sort that information out. I think the other point is on business restrictions. The business industry that has been hit the hardest has been the tourism industry.
Right. Yeah. And I don't know if Mr. Ortega wants to comment, but with the lack of a Gem and Mineral Show, I'm sure there has been some impact on city funds, sales tax, et cetera.
Thank you, Chair Bronson and members of the council on the board. Absolutely, and we are very concerned about that. There is a movement to have a scaled back rendition of the Gem Show later in the calendar year. So, we're hopeful that we'll see some recovery of that. As Councilmember Cunningham mentioned, we are seeing a reduction in our overall sales tax. It's not been quite as much as we had originally projected, but it still is a decrease. Mayor, if you don't mind, I just also wanted to cover one piece that's, I think, important for the council and the board to know with regard to our parks. We are working closely with our partners at the county to make sure we're lockstep on that. Initially, I know Vice Mayor Lee had some concerns about maybe the differences between a county park and a city park. We are working very closely to make sure that the opportunities for residents, whether they're unincorporated in Pima County or in the incorporated ones, are similar, the same with regard to our parks, including activities, which are the sporting events that have already been mentioned, as well as just how we organize these larger opportunities going forward. That's all, Chair and Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. Supervisor Heinz, did you have another question?
Oh, yeah, thank you so much. I was just going to say that. Yeah. And with regard to business restrictions and meeting with multiple members, actually, with the Tucson Metro Chamber and a variety of individual and business groups in the past several weeks, something that I have learned with regards, because we're all in this together, we're all in the same community. So, I know that these business owners understand the public health predicament and want to be helpful. And I think some of the things that I have heard from the community is that, you know, communication has to be, you know, communication is essential. So, the information about what's going on, what exactly the restrictions are and why. Fairness and equity in any mitigation efforts, obviously. If one place is being required to have masks and another isn't, that would make no sense and not be fair. And something that I thought was, that I initially found was really surprising, but it makes quite a bit of sense to me now. If we need to have additional mitigation efforts, stricter ones, looking at stay-at-home orders or that kind of thing, if we see or when we see the UK variants, for example, spread to Pima County, or Arizona, implement any such mitigation efforts in a way that these businesses can take advantage of available federal funding. Meaning, don't decrease capacities allowed to be inside of a restaurant or apply a curfew, for example, but shut it down, right? Because then, they can apply for a considerable number of federal dollars to continue to keep their folks on payroll. Whereas, the other ways, you're kind of just basically forcing them to bleed money, you know, week after week after week. And I thought that was a really interesting perspective that, you know, that I could have been, I've heard their point of view on that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Because we're running short on time.
Be real brief.
Councilmember Kazachik.
So, to Supervisor Heinz's point, that's why the statewide mandate on the masks would be helpful, the consistency issue that you bring up. Remind, piggybacking on what Administrator Huckleberry said with respect to the, that we are under the executive order of the governor, that executive order was implemented when the numbers were substantially lower than what they are now. So, again, back to context. As far as the city of Tucson's actions are concerned, we also implemented an extension of premises options for restaurants. So, if you go into the downtown core right now, you'll see a lot of outdoor seating. And they're very appreciative of that. And I would like to, at this point, thank Jan Lesher and the county for helping out with downtown businesses and also the Fourth Avenue businesses. Through your efforts, nearly a million dollars of CARES money has been allocated to small local businesses just in that region that have really kept doors open and very grateful for your help on those, that effort.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, what quick statement?
Real quickly, because we've got to move on to the next item.
I understand. And I also understand the part of my question was ruled out of order, so I'll omit that. I'm very pleased to hear that this council and the mayor are working for businesses and trying to aid them. But I have to point out that in this meeting, the mayor and council just passed a resolution to join in an amicus with the county on reinstating curfews, hardly a business-friendly gesture. a business-friendly gesture. Also, the city and mayor have been very forceful in the use of masks, making employees be mask police to their businesses, hardly a business-friendly gesture. I needed to point those out, and I thank you for allowing me to do so. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and we're going to move on now to the final item, and that's federal funds appropriate to the state of Arizona and local jurisdiction. I'll turn it over to Mr. Huckleberry.
Yes, Chair Bronson, members of board, Mayor Romero, and members of the council, I'll be brief. This continues to be a struggle. We expended fully our $87.1 million of CARES Act money as of December 31st. All of our activities associated with either vaccination or testing has been borne completely by the county without any real assurances of reimbursement. We have made some efforts in trying to get the state to release the vaccination money, $66 million to the state provided by the Consolidated Budget Act. We have been told that we will receive 7.1, we have not seen it yet, our accelerated vaccination plan that we provided to the state and which we then updated with the disadvantaged component cost in implementation, about $14 million to as much as 21, depending upon how long you have to go in the vaccination process, primarily. How long you have to go in the vaccination process depends entirely on vaccine supply. So as you can see, we're facing a deficit in the area of vaccination, something we're prepared to, I believe, bear if necessary. In the area of testing, we've already talked about that, how much has been spent, what the obligations are. We know there's a little bit of relief coming from the state, but the way in which it's distributed amplifies the fact the state does not know what's occurring on the ground in each county. I think we've also made some pleas to our congressional delegation to get involved and to actually help allocate some of those funds or get them broken loose. And whatever happens in a third relief bill is that cities and counties need a direct appropriation, very similar to the first Coronavirus Relief Act, and those should be made directly to any county or city that has a population of over 500,000, and particularly for counties that provide solely for the public health benefits of the entire county, again, for populations over 500,000. That model would fit throughout the country, and we're hopeful that that gets accomplished. So let me turn it back over to City Manager Ortega for a brief update, and then we can answer questions if you have it.
Thank you, Mr. Huckleberry, and Mayor and Council, and members of the Board of Supervisors, Chair Bronson. So much like you all, we had 95 million in coronavirus relief monies, most of which was expended by the end of the calendar year. We did hold back a small amount, as I mentioned earlier, for testing to get us through the end of this month. Those dollars were used for business assistance, for rental assistance, and all of the items that they mentioned previously. In addition, as I mentioned earlier, on the eviction, under the eviction item, we did receive just over $16 million in rental assistance, and it's rent and utility assistance. We are working with our partner at the Community Investment Corp. to get those dollars out. Again, the idea is to provide money for folks that are in arrears on the rent and/or utilities, and provide them three months of rent and utility assistance going forward. One thing that I know Administrator Huckleberry and I have been very frustrated over is the lack of reimbursement from FEMA. That has been very, very difficult for both of us. I think that if there were messaging, it would be great for the feds to understand when there's an announcement made about FEMA funding, it's great and wonderful, but when it comes to actually receiving the reimbursement, it's been nonexistent. And the bureaucracy that is assigned to that at the either state or federal level has made it very, very difficult. We have yet to see dollars come back to us that were submitted last year, and I think it's a shame when you hear a lot of public conversation about it. Unfortunately, those dollars don't come back to our community. With that, Madam Chair and Madam Mayor, happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Huckleberry and Mr. Ortega. If you provide me a moment, Madam Chair, I just wanted to thank our federal partners, our congressional delegation, the senators, both Senator Sinema and Senator Kelly have been helping the city of Tucson, and I'm pretty sure Pima County navigate the conversation on the previous packages, relief packages, and then the one that's currently on the table brought by President Biden. So I did want to thank our Southern Arizona congressional delegation, Congressman Grijalva, Congressman Kirkpatrick, for their assistance, their help, and their listening to me as the mayor of the city of Tucson in advocating for direct funding with the first package, and then with the second package. I know that the state of Arizona received, received direct federal funds specifically for vaccination and testing, and that in order for the residents of Pima County, who are also city of Tucson residents, we need to make sure that we continue working with our state legislature, our delegation from Southern Arizona to the state legislature. I know I've made some calls myself to be able to advocate for those testing and vaccination funds that came to the state specifically for testing and vaccination that they get here, to Pima County and the city of Tucson. Chuck shared a letter that was signed back in January 29, behalf of mayors here in Pima County and Chair Bronson, requesting from the governor our fair share of the $460 million received by the state from the federal government for COVID-19 testing and vaccination. So I wanted to reiterate to Pima County, because, you know, we, the city of Tucson and its residents, we're also putting money on the table to help with vaccination and testing, that we continue advocating to the governor that Pima County and the city of Tucson receive those funds. So just wanted to open up with that, with our partnership with the federal government, and also wanted to mention that President Robbins sent a letter to the council and the Board of Supervisors, just, you know, thanking us and congratulating for the historic meeting that we're having, that they want to make sure that the University of Arizona is part of the, of the effort, and that the three jurisdictions work in partnership to make sure that vaccinations are fairly and equitably distributed to all residents of Tucson and Pima County. So I just, we will forward that letter to the Board of Supervisors. We've received it, and I've asked the clerk to add it to the public record for today's meeting. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and Madam Bronson, Chairman Bronson, I have one question now.
Go ahead, council member.
Through a new federal effort, Walgreens and CVS would be offered, will be offering COVID-19 shots. The question raised by the community was over administrative fee. Can be explained how Walgreens and CVS would administer the shots and people would not be charged for the shot or charge administrative fee either?
Can someone answer?
Francisco, go ahead.
Chair Bronson, members of the board, Mayor Romero, members of the council, Councilman Timis. So the, so to be clear, when you go get a vaccine, and when you get any of these COVID vaccines, you are frequently asked for your insurance information, and whoever provided that vaccine, whether it's Banner, TMC, or in this case, the pharmacy, retail pharmacies, will absolutely take that opportunity to send a bill out to your insurer. Please be assured that individuals should not be getting individual bills at that time of service or any time thereafter. So that is, that has been the case since the whole process started. It is important for those, you know, for the pharmacy, for Banner, for the clinic, to recover some of the costs for actually putting the shot in your arm, but that is invisible to the patients, that will be visible to the patient's insurance. So that is the clarification I believe you wanted.
And for the uninsured people, Dr. Garcia?
The federal government eats the cost.
Does that answer your question, council member?
Yes, but if I can get something to relate to the groups that have been bringing this up, the neighbor associations and several of the diversity groups that brought this question to us, because they've seen it on TV, and they say, we're getting a federal, we're getting a free product, and then they're going to make money, and people that are Social Security making $150 or less a month, they can't afford this.
I think we can have our health department prepare some, an information sheet that would be able to find helpful when your constituents contact you.
Thank you, Chair.
Chair Bronson.
All right, well, we're, we've got two minutes left. Any comments from any, and you want to make some closing remarks, Mayor, or what's your pleasure?
Sure, I think I heard Dr. or Supervisor, or should I call him Dr. Supervisor Heinz?
Thank you. Just a couple, and this might be for Mr. Huckleberry or possibly for Andy Flag, but with regard to the federal funds approved in the second aid package for local governments for testing, the $416 million that's been at the state for possibly as long as five weeks now, are, have like, has the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services been notified, the CDC specifically? I mean, these funds were sent to the state to be distributed to the local health authority during the testing. I would think that if a Congress, you know, earmarks things in that way, that there'd be a problem if the state doesn't actually deliver on it, and not in a year and a half, but when it's actually needed right now. So I guess, what, have we discussed that, A, other legal options, like complaints due to, and then two other very quick things. We heard that the governor talked about a $600 million tax cut in the state of the state. Like, the $300 million, it doesn't seem to be going to the counties. Not, like, they can't just use that right for the, I hope, I would think not, but I just, please reaffirm that for me. And lastly, I know this is about the federal funds, but if Mr. Huckleberry, the county and city, if we can all advocate and do our best to get direct delivery of not only dollars, but doses, I want the county to receive funds for vaccine distribution and for testing, and also the vaccines to distribute, so we just can get cut through all this garbage and get this job done.
Thank you, and it is noon now. Mr. Huckleberry or Mr. Ortega, do you have any quick comments before we adjourn this meeting?
Chair Bronson, I believe the, myself and the city manager have taken that as general direction to draft a letter to the Secretary of HHS explaining the dilemma we're under with regards to the lack of funding being dispersed through federal agencies to the state and not receiving the frontline folk who are actually doing the work. We will draft the letter essentially for that on behalf of the board and the council.
Thank you.
Chair Mayor Bronson, may I make a real quick point, based on, piggybacking on what Matt just said? What are the terms of the federal funds going to the state? I mean, there must be terms and conditions that the state receiving them has to distribute them through. We're coming as a supplicant. They were given a gift, essentially, a gift that is supposed to be distributed to the people who are doing the work on the ground, which is the people on this call. So we shouldn't have to come hat in hand to Governor Ducey saying, hey, you got 416 million bucks, we need a piece of that. What were the terms and conditions when those dollars arrived in Phoenix? And again, with respect to Matt's question, what legal options do we have to immediately say, send us a check?
Councilmember Kasachek, I, I understand that those funds sent by the federal government were sent to the state, and they were assigned for testing and vaccination, yet the governor has chosen to either keep those funds and not use them, and not distributing to counties, towns, and cities that are spending money for testing, vaccination. So what we could do, and we've already sent a letter on behalf of town mayors and myself and the chair, to request those funds, we can continue working with our congressional delegation, as Chair Bronson said. Senator Souley is going to hopefully advocate for Pima County and the city of Tucson to receive those funds, so that we can continue providing the services for the benefit and the health of our community. And I agree with Supervisor Heinz that we need to make a note to our congressional delegation of being able to receive direct funds, both city and county, and not just funds, but the amount of vaccines that are, is distributed in our community. So I just want to make sure that we're fair in terms of keeping you on time, and... And I, quickly, it looks like Mr. Rankin has his hands up, if you're not aware of that, Mayor. I, I don't. Go ahead, Mr. Rankin.
You're muted. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Chair. I'm confident that the letter the county administrator just referenced will, in fact, cite those terms and conditions for the appropriations of the federal funds to the state, and to the extent the county administrator and city manager need help with citation to those terms and conditions, I'm confident Mr. Flag and I will be able to assist in that. Thank you.
Supervisor Bronson, really quickly?
Yes.
ADHS, ADHS is, they just sent out a press release that they're making $100 million immediately available for testing, so Pima County's share would be 14.36 million. What I would, what I, I just, it just came up, so I thought I would share that. But I did want to make sure that while we have all of us at the table, that we create some sort of very easy flyer for our nonprofit organizations and others to download and have a printout of all of the services that are available related to COVID-19 for, for everybody. So where the testing sites are going to be, and then we periodically update that and have it on both of our websites, put both of our logos out there so everybody knows, because I didn't know that we were still, that the city of Tucson was sponsoring testing at El Pueblo Neighborhood Center. I didn't know that. So I just think that it's, and I'm, and I'm reading this information, and I do think that we have to partner in a better way to make sure that our communities know where everything is located, that it's all really easy, front and back, little flyer for rental assistance, utility, food boxes, you know, any services that are related to COVID, the pandemic and the recovery. So thank you very much, all of you, for being here. It really, I think, was a really good meeting.
I concur, and I think our staffs now have direction to put such an information packet together. So it is now February 6, and I, again, want to thank everybody who joined us today, and especially our health department, and...
especially our health department and the city of Tucson for what they're doing on evictions and housing. And Mayor, if you have a few more words, please proceed, and then we can adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Chair Bronson. I really appreciate my colleagues on the council, my colleagues on the Board of Supervisors, and Administrator Huckleberry and our city manager, Mr. Ortega, for helping us coordinate the logistics and information sharing for this meeting. Chair, appreciate you being able to coordinate with you. I, I will be pitching to my colleagues on the council, as well as the Board of Supervisors, that we start thinking about the next meeting, next joint meeting. I think it's very beneficial. Hopefully, by the end of the year, we can have another one to touch base. And even though we're not meeting publicly jointly, I want to make sure that the community knows that on my behalf, and I know my colleagues on the council, that we are at the ready and willing to further the relationship and partnership with Pima County government and its elected officials. And that right now, we now, now more than ever, we have to make sure that we are joining forces as much as we possibly can to fight our common enemy, which is COVID-19. So thank you, Chair. I really appreciate your time, and I'm looking forward to the fruits of the labor of this meeting pretty quickly, especially with that letter by, that work by Mr. Ortega and Mr. Huckleberry. So thank you all so much, and have a wonderful weekend.
All right. Supervisor Scott, did you wish to say something? You're on the screen now.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to ask, are the members of the board supposed to stay on the call after the adjournment of the joint meeting to talk about the possible suspension of COVID testing that we got a memorandum on yesterday?
Mr. Huckleberry, did you want to respond to Supervisor Scott's question? I don't think we need to stay on at this point, but I'll defer to Mr. Huckleberry.
Chair Bronson, members of the board, we're going to take the state's press release at its face value, that we will receive at least $14.3 million, and that will fund us for testing up to and through March the 2nd. So we will revisit this matter at the board meeting of March the 2nd.
Thanks, Mr. Huckleberry. If you does, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. If there are no further questions, then without objection, this meeting stands adjourned. And Mayor, you join me in adjourning, is that correct, just for the record?
Yes, for the record, this meeting of the Board of Supervisors, Mayor and Council is adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Bye.